This is the Brattleboro Planning Commission, our monthly meeting, May 4th, 2020, second meeting online. And the first item on the agenda is announcements. Anybody got anything?
Just to let you know, the town offices are open. Well, they're there, we're still requesting that you do business online or over the phone, but you can make an appointment if there's some sort of an emergency and you need the offices. They're all staffed. If you visit the municipal center, you will need to have a face mask. If you don't have one, we will provide one for you.
Okay.
So we're still accepting permits and we'll be scheduling development review hearings as needed.
And are you in the office, Sue? Are you still working remotely?
I'm not. I will spend two afternoons in the office. We're kind of all spending some time in the office.
But not together.
What's up?
Not together.
No, not together.
Okay, great.
So I'll be there generally Tuesday and Thursday afternoons.
Okay. Um, any other announcements? Okay, public comment. Are there any members of the public here? I don't see them, if they are.
I don't see any other, any public on either.
Okay, so we'll say no to that. Approval of the minutes of April 8th, 2020. Did everybody get a chance to have a look at those? I see Bruton's nodding her head, Josh nodding.
Yes.
Yeah. Tommy? Tom, can you give something? Or down, or do you have a comment?
Can you hear me?
Yes, 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 we can hear you.
Okay, great. Yes, I saw the minutes.
You don't have any amendments, changes?
No, I'd like to make a motion to approve them.
Excellent. Is there a second?
Second.
Excellent. Um, further discussion? All right, hearing none. I will assume, well, I guess all those in favor of approving the minutes. How do we take votes on this thing?
A roll call would probably be good.
What?
So if you, Felicity, if you just go through each person and just get a yes or a no from them, that would be good, a roll call is.
Tom, approval of the minutes?
I approve. I.
You know, I'm sorry to be a pain. I have one correction or suggestion, which, under our, our values, under equity, I think it should say creating conditions that permit full participation and opportunity. But anyway, if you don't want to belabor that, we can talk about it, because it's on the agenda later, too.
Uh, well, these are supposed to be a record of the event that took place, so is that what was said?
If I think I, if I said it, that's what I intended to say.
All right, well, then it should change to that.
I should have said, anyway.
Um, yeah, well, I've just assumed it is what you said, and the minute should be changed to, to, to what you said. And given that, do you approve? No, we need to go back again, with that exception.
Sorry.
On top of my screen, Tom.
Okay, with that modification, I make a motion to approve last month's minutes.
All right. Bruton's?
I second them.
And you approve?
I approve them.
Jess?
Yep, I do.
Kate?
Kate approves.
Okay, Josh?
I approve.
Excellent. Do I, does staff vote on the minutes?
Staff does not.
Okay, do I vote?
You can, yes.
I also approve. All right, the minutes are approved with no abstentions. Welcome, Jess, if you didn't miss anything. Okay, so we've approved the minutes. Now, we're on to the first item of our discussion, COVID-19 and planning. So I went through and reviewed all the materials that got sent out. I wonder how many other people had enough time to go through and look at them. And I will start by saying that I don't expect us to make any decisions at this point. I think this is really an opportunity for us to kind of decide what it is that we want to hone in on and focus our energies on, vis a vis planning and COVID-19. So, and we can, we can ask for more data, we can, we can pursue different kinds of reports, depending upon where that conversation goes. So with that said, people just want to start, start talking, unless Sue or Andrew, you want to add some more context, you've been paying much more attention to all of the webinars and things that have been happening.
I mean, I guess one of the context for the data that you received is that there was some discussion from some members with myself and Andrew and Felicity about economic development. And so that's why the data that you received was a lot on the businesses, and just kind of a collection of information about business impact that's to be expected. So, but there might be other avenues that you want to pursue as well.
For the economic impact, I think we should also add health and safety, too. Including somehow tying the two together, potentially. I don't know if that makes any sense. I apologize, apologize if it doesn't. I missed the.
Health and safety tied together, or health and safety with economic development?
With economic development pertaining to the town, moving forward, you know, like the future of economic development and health and safety for Brattleboro.
Can you say a little bit more what you're thinking?
Well, for instance, like Tom and I briefly were talking about different things to do, and Jess also. Pertaining to opening Brattleboro back up and like what the town can do, like, uh, simple, simple ideas are hand sanitizing stations, and maybe even like paintings on the sidewalk of like reminders to keep people six feet apart. I don't know if that's a part of the economic development conversation, or if that's a whole nother thing, a whole nother category we should add on to another meeting, or if this one's appropriate.
I think that it's related to economic development, because people definitely need to feel safe to come to Brattleboro, and, or come down to, you know, wherever you're going in Brattleboro, people want to feel safe. And there are some discussions about that. I mean, I think by the next time the planning commission meets, there may be some more public type proposal on something like that. But I think, yeah, we should definitely list it. Because I do think it relates to economic development.
Yeah, and I couldn't, I couldn't agree more, you know, to get people to go back out and shop and consume and support local establishments, they need to feel safe doing that and knowing that the town at least is taking the precautions that we can, within our, within our capabilities to helping keep people safe.
Okay. More thoughts?
I could chime in with a few various thoughts I've come up with.
Yeah, please.
I'll, I'll reiterate or expand on something I said last time, but then also bring up a couple other ideas. One was that, that doorknob idea. You know, I, looking at the land use regs, you know, we require things like certain types of lighting and electric car charging, stations in certain developments and people's houses or multi-unit places. So before I was saying that I think this is something, you know, requiring public buildings to have doors for the public that are able to be opened without putting your hands and fingers on it. So there's various ways out there. I thought that would just be a building code thing that's regulated at the state level, but I think our land use regs provide for that, because like I said, we require all sorts of specific things. So, and I think this would have a lot of benefit just beyond this pandemic, too. I mean, you know, there's some public areas where, let's say, hundreds of people every day are touching, you know, the worst culprit, the round doorknobs. And I think, I think, you know, I haven't seen any studies, but I've seen various articles that, just summary sort of things, just saying stuff like that are, can be, have the potential to be big vectors. So I'd like to explore the option of adding some requirement like that to the land use regs. And I also thought, my thinking went towards one of the, the seven big documents that was in the, in the folder, and it showed in Wyndham County or Brattleboro, the, the industries that are at most, a combination of biggest by various metrics and at the most immediate risk because of this pandemic. And it was accommodation and food and drinking establishments, I think, if I interpreted it correctly. And as far as the food and drinking establishments go, now, this is one that I think may not be at all within the, the planning commission's purview, but maybe we can make recommendations to the select board, or I don't know, league of cities and towns or the state, but maybe, especially with the warm weather coming, food and especially drinking can happen beyond, like associated with a venue can start happening in a more spread out way, like not just right along, touching the glass, you know, on one strip along the sidewalk, but I don't know, getting creative with not reducing the establishment's capacity, so that way they stay business. But you know, loosening some of the restrictions on outdoor eating and drinking, so that way businesses can, can still do well.
I have something to add to that also, when Tom's done.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, yeah, that is, that's one of the, one of my bullet points for this evening. I'm super excited to be having this conversation, so I really appreciate this. But you kind of nailed it, um, let's see. You kind of nailed it with the, for instance, talking with downtown business owners, opening up sidewalks for food consumption and expanding or extending like liquor licensing onto the sidewalks, you know, I definitely know that that's difficult because of the varied area that we have between the street and parking spaces, and that's always been a concern in the past. But the times are changing, and they can also be really exciting. So if we can explore, I don't know, the purview of planning commission and liquor licensing, adding to the availability of space beyond just the indoor spaces that restaurants and eateries already occupy. So opening up and making sidewalks available is, is high on the list.
But that also include shutting down roads and allowing restaurants to take up space in, in streets downtown?
I was just thinking the same thing, too.
I'm thinking the same thing, too, except for that's a, it's a scary thing to say, but I love the idea.
It's wild, it's crazy new times.
I have a couple response, a couple thoughts to respond to those. So I don't know enough about liquor licensing, and I'm going to have to get back to you on that. I don't know if it's, you know, we follow what the state says, and therefore, I think one of the things about liquor licensing, because I remember from Arkham, is, you know, there needs to be some barriers and whatnot. And so putting up barriers on a sidewalk can then create ADA issues. I'm just thinking aloud, I need to research that a little bit more to be able to report back to you. And as to Tom's comment, and this, this does get to the liquor licenses or shutting down roads, you know, the, the planning commission is in a position where they can make policy recommendations to the select board. So, you know, however these come out, you know, it can be a document that you then go present to the select board or something like that. So you should think big. They would ultimately have to say over things that are not land use regulation related, so.
I definitely understand the complexity.
And then shutting down the roads, the other thing, Main Street, you know, a lot of our main roads, Main Street, Honey Road, Canal Street, a lot of them are state, state owned. So there might be another barrier there, but there's lots of roads that are state-owned as well.
It'll be interesting, an interesting balance, too, because we also need, in terms of maintaining social distance, you know, it'll be harder to use the sidewalks and not be within six feet of people if they're narrowed. So there's, there's a lot of, there's just going to be some trade-offs and complexity, I think. But, you know, one of the things that Burlington's doing is, because of lower traffic, they're using this as a time to, to cordon off and improve, you know, like bicycle, making it, having wider lanes for bikes so that you can pass better, or they're not as close to pedestrians. So they've put up cones and done that a few places. So it's kind of an interesting time to try that. And, you know, we have all the usual challenges that make biking in Brattleboro challenging, just in terms of the width of the streets and things like that. But, but I agree, this is a time to be creative. And, and also, when there's less parking, that gives us more opportunities, you know, like you could have those parklets, you know, the take-up parking places can be seating spaces for restaurants and stuff, so.
Or, or possibly with the results that we got from the downtown survey, we could think about recommending improving the top of the parking garage and using that space as overflow for downtown restaurants.
I don't mean to be the naysayer on that, and I would need more information, but there is some weird thing about the load, like it can apparently, you know, handle however many parked cars can be up there, but the, there's something with the physics and the load of people being up there, because that's been explored for having like dance parties up there or movies. There's something weird going on there. I, I don't understand it, I could get more.
Right, or.
That might be.
Heard of that, I've heard of that. So I, I, I knew a designer who was, who was asked to redesign a parking space, and they had to build an enormous superstructure underneath the parking space for pedestrians to use that space. Because, because of the way, the way human beings, the weight is distributed over a wider swath, whereas over, or it's distributed over narrow swaths, whereas a car, it takes up seven or eight feet, and its weight is distributed over that seven or eight feet. If you have 70 people in that same space, the weight is differently distributed. And so parking garages are just made for cars and not for hundreds of human beings, or even 50 human beings. So that makes all the sense in the world to me, sorry, just to, I, I, I don't, anyway, I don't think you need to research, I've heard of that. Um, Josh, I see your, do you guys mind? Do you want me to turn my camera on? I don't have my camera on, just because I just don't, but I'm happy to turn it on.
Turn it on, it'd be nice to see your face.
Yeah, I like to see your face, but.
Sorry, you know, I just sit in front of this thing all day long, I'm always looking at myself, so I just, it was nice to just not see me for a little bit, but here I am.
So since we're talking about parking, um, the next big thing, so a lot of this conversation is definitely going to be difficult, and there's definitely going to be like, you know, the state might say this, the town might say that, and I don't know, you guys are all disappearing.
No.
Are you there?
Yeah, yeah, we're all here.
Okay, cool, you all just disappeared.
People go in and out based on their bandwidth and what's going on there. So, I mean, I know we like to see each other, but actually, if it's not coming in very clear, or if you're having sound issues, sometimes if you turn off your camera, it might improve those things. So it could just be your bandwidth.
So, uh, some of this conversation will definitely be difficult to have, but it's also kind of exciting. The next thing, talking with a lot of, this is obviously downtown specific, but talking with a lot of business owners downtown, is not charging parking meter, charging for parking downtown for an undetermined amount of time. And I think what that really means is like, it could be a year, it could be two years, six months. I think it should be not charging for parking downtown for a reasonable and a healthy amount of time. You know, I'm not sure what that looks like, but we really, really need to induce people's comfort going downtown to shop and be downtown and participate in events. And we need it to be affordable, because this is a long-term thing that we're obviously dealing with. And the majority of folks' finances, even paying for parking meters and then parking tickets on top of that, is going to discourage just enough people from going downtown, that that could be devastating. So I'm, I don't know if a planning commission thing, or if it's just us writing to the select board, I don't know what that looks like, but it would be amazing if we could have a conversation on what it looks like to not charge for parking for a long period of time.
I would probably, too, and I don't know exactly all of it off the top of my head, but I think if you were going to make some overture from the, the planning commission to the select board, we need to do the research. There is an enterprise fund that parking is, you know, paid for, or that runs parking, and there was the 2018 parking study, so we'll, we'd want to revisit that.
I, can I, can I make a recommendation that we, that everybody just throw out all their ideas, and we'll just, we'll just tally them up, and then we can, we can shoot them down all in one fell swoop, rather than one after the other? Or not, as the case may be? So, so Josh, you want to keep going?
Um, that's kind of difficult. I was kind of seeing this conversation going like free-flowing. I'm not arguing at all, I like that idea. But mine, my bullet points are definitely pretty random, so that's why I was just, I want to, I'm mostly interested on what you folks have to say also. You know, I want to, I want to hear you out. And then as they were coming up in conversation, I kind of assumed I would bring up other ideas or other points, you know, that, that may not have been brought up yet. So if you would like me to keep going with my list, I absolutely can, or I can wait to hear other people.
I mean, yeah, yeah, you can, if everybody wants you to go, I mean, I.
Yeah, this is Kate. I'd like to hear what's on Josh's list, particularly if there's anything that it would help to look at more urgently. I mean, I think we're dealing with like, an urgent crisis, and then it's, there's probably going to be some sort of longer-term thing where, I mean, no one knows what's going to happen, but it's sounding like we've got sort of this urgent crisis of infection. We've got businesses that are just closed or operating on a shoestring. And then I think there'll be maybe some longer-term period where things will be better, but not all the way back to normal. So I'm particularly interested in, you know, given that we're in, we're right now in the crisis, if there are any ideas that can help the vitality of our businesses during that crisis period.
And I feel like that's absolutely right, Kate, you know, like we're dealing with an immediate crisis, and then we're going to be dealing with a long-term crisis after this, you know, and we're talking about like the health and the vibrancy of Brattleboro. And a lot of my focus is on economic development, and that's just because of my situation with understanding like what it takes to run a business in this town, and the complexities of that. So you're definitely right in, in the two different issues we have. And I think we have, like I mentioned before, we have a big puzzle we need to put together. So all of these ideas, like I want to hear everybody out, I'm excited to learn new ideas and learn what other municipalities are doing. But for me, the big one, right, the number one on my list is repeal the 1% local option tax. And I absolutely know the planning commission doesn't have much to do with that. It's a, it's a town meeting and the select board idea, but I would love to write a letter to the select board to repeal that tax. That is huge, you know, because it is only 1%, it's a penny on the dollar. But we're literally talking about, we're literally about talking about change, you know, and that's money in people's pockets, to be able to go downtown and then, you know, potentially spend at an establishment that is struggling, that is going to be struggling for a long time to come. You know, so any little thing we can do is incredibly important, and it's just a piece of the puzzle that we need to put together to helping these businesses. So that's the big one, is the repeal the 1% local option tax. Another thing, too, is again, like I apologize for my ignorance, you know, I've been on the planning commission for a couple of years now, and I still don't understand like the nuances and like how this system works. But I'm going to throw it all out there, because it's, these are things that I feel are important to the community, and things that we should start doing now, till maybe a year, two years down the road, things would just be that much more easy to maintain and manage, and we won't lose that many businesses out of this community. So this is a town, a town thing, Brattleboro, and that's only hiring local companies to do the bidding and to do the, the contracting with the town on a rotation, though, so that we're not hiring the same companies over and over. You know, that's another, another thing, and like, again, that doesn't need to last for forever, but something we can do in the immediate, to where we see taxpayer money going to local businesses, in turn, it's a true and honest trickle-down, I like to believe, because we're hiring locally, and having it on, on a rotation. That way, we're not hiring the same company for the same projects. We can, we can distribute the money in other places.
Josh, by local, do you mean Brattleboro specifically, or do you mean like southern Vermont? You mean?
Also, I understand, you know, like when we put stuff out to bid, when we put out an RFP, you know, we're, we're looking for, you know, we're not hiring the cheapest person, we're not hiring the most expensive, we're hiring someone in the middle. They may be from Burlington, they may be from Connecticut, who knows where they're from. I'm, I'm absolutely talking about Brattleboro specific, unless it makes sense to be Wyndham County, because we're the Brattleboro Planning Commission, and we're in Wyndham County. So obviously, there's really difficult things when, when it comes to things I know nothing about, like who we're hiring for what. But if there are options in Brattleboro, I feel that it should be Brattleboro-based businesses getting these jobs, you know, that way we can keep our money local, which is incredibly crucial right now. Did I answer your question? Awesome.
Yeah, I definitely think that that makes sense to, to wait, to wait location much heavier in the RFP process.
Yeah, especially.
Yeah. One of the things that you mentioned, I guess it was right before you said something about the local option tax, reminded me of a story that I heard from a Keen business. So I just want to share the story, and I wonder if there is a mechanism in Brattleboro to, to support this. But a business in town recently bought a historic building and is in the process of renovating it for their new office space. Virus hit. Their renovations are slowing down. But another company in town who does construction received the PPP loan, and so they have to keep their, their employees. They valued the building and saw that there was a small project that they could send their employees to work on. And instead of charging the business that owned the historic building, they offered the services for free because the, the salaries were being covered by the PPP loan. So it was a nice way for one business to take care of another.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good story.
It reminds me of, what is it in Brattleboro? Isn't there like a barter trade?
There is, there's a trade.
Brattleboro time trade?
Yeah, time trade. It's ama, it's amazing.
Brattleboro time trade.
Um, so, so can I, can I propose a system for, for doing, for doing this? I think if we, if we sort of, everybody throws out their ideas, and then we try to think about what ideas are feasible that we want to work on, because anything that we do as a planning commission needs to come, you know, from us as a group, and we have to decide as a group which of the things that we want. And we have to decide as a group, which of the things that we want to put our energy behind. So, so is that okay with everyone? And I guess the other thing that I'm, I mean, it seems like what, what, what we're working on right now is the notion of sustaining our businesses in, in sort of short to medium term. And so I, I think there are some other things we can do, but, but I don't want to throw us off this, that, this discussion right now. So I'm going to mute.
I had another thing came up that was sort of inspired by your comments about the local option tax, Josh. Uh, the co-op near where I work does a roundup program where you can just round up for good. And they pick a certain nonprofit program that they donate those pennies to. But it's an opt-in program. And it, I wonder if that might be a better option than saying it's a tax? Just having an opt-in extra little bit that folks can donate and potentially to a program or a group that is supporting local businesses like the DBA or the United Way has a really incredible emergency relief fund right now in Wyndham County.
And are you saying that instead, or instead of the option tax, like keeping the option tax and then including that also?
No. If we would eliminate the local option tax, having folks be able to opt in for contributing money to the, to the government of downtown or whatever it is, rather than having the flat, like you must pay this.
I'd love that idea too, because like I was even thinking about that pertaining to parking downtown. Cause I understand like how much of a revenue we would lose by people not paying for parking meters downtown. So what if we said, you don't have to pay for parking for the next two years, but you can if you want to. You know, if you feel like putting some money in the machine, the town will not complain if you feel so inclined, you know? So just stuff like that, you know, because we, we need to induce people going into town. And then there are some folks that want to help other businesses. So yeah, like, like you're talking about the co-op, Brattleboro co-op does that too. They have those bottles or whatever they are that you can put change in for all the, the local nonprofits, you know, to support. So is that kind of what you mean? But is it for more municipality and less nonprofit? Is that what you're referring to?
I don't know where, where the funding would go, or if it would make sense to, to go through a different mechanism, or if it would make sense to go to a town fund. Yeah.
I like that idea too, because we could potentially get more money than going to the state and then us getting our percentage back. You know, once they take their cut, you know, so I do actually kind of really dig that idea. Should I keep going or are you guys sick of hearing me talk?
Oh, you're inspiring me.
I'm, I'm halfway there. So another big one too, again, I apologize for my ignorance. This is definitely new to me in the sense of like, what can the planning commission do? But some sort of rent stabilization or rent caps? And can the, can the, the town do anything to promote affordable and realistic rental market in Brattleboro? You know, like before COVID-19, it was definitely getting out of hand. Rental prices were, were becoming totally unattainable to people that really, really want to start businesses in this town. So I don't know what rent stabilization, rental caps looks like in Brattleboro. You know, I know Sue and Andrew can talk a lot about that and like what our capabilities are. But I feel that we need the select board to do something when it comes to rents in Brattleboro and like the entire town, not just downtown. Well, that's the next thing on the list. We can, we can skip over that one and then.
Just to, just to make sure I'm clear, Josh, you're suggesting rent for businesses and not, not rent for individual people's residences?
Um, right now, because
Or both.
Because of the conversation, absolutely businesses in the, in the commercial market. But then I would love for that to transfer over into the residential arena also. But for the sake of the conversation to, right now in this moment, for this agenda item, I'm pertaining to just businesses.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying. Thanks. Go on.
Um, so then we talked about parking and not paying for parking. Then we talked about public health and safety, what Tom was talking about with the doors and the handles, hand sanitizer stations, paintings on sidewalks, reminding people to be able to keep their distance from one another. And then cleanup programs. This isn't for me, this is an issue I hear a lot from downtown business owners and all of town business owners. And maintaining a cleaner facade to be more attractive, to pour, pull more people out to go shopping. That's something I hear about a lot. I personally don't have any dogs in this, in this fight at all, but it's just something I hear a lot about and I would love to hear you folks and see if, if you guys are receiving the same feedback. And that's basically my list, so.
Josh, could you expand on that last comment a little more?
Which one? The, a cleanup program?
Yep.
Um, so I didn't email it to you guys. Are any of you folks, there's a Facebook page called Downtown. I'm opening it up right now. Downtown Business. Uh, I lost my Facebook.
Downtown Business Merchants?
Yes, that one. Thank you. Are you following, do you follow that? Was that Sue that said that?
So what is it Downtown Business?
Downtown Business Merchant Page. And they have like 150, 200 people on it and it's all downtown business owners. And it seems pretty active. I wish there were more business owners, more vocal and active on it. Because it does seem like a good platform where people are pulling ideas and, and getting together and coming up with things to do. And on that page, Stephanie from the DBA put together a document, I can email it to you guys, of a lot of different ideas that folks, business owners in downtown specifically only have been talking about needing and wanting and desiring to create a healthier business community for downtown specifically. And that was one of the big things that they keep coming, Andrew, to answer your question. That is one of the big things that they keep coming back to. And it's like trash being left around, dog poop being left around, you know, like simple things like that that I don't know what the planning commission's role is or the town's role is, but I'm sure we probably play a part somehow. And I, I believe the point of that is to really induce and attract people to going out and supporting, you know, shopping local and supporting local businesses, you know, and making people comfortable, safe, healthy, feel invited. And so. I want to hear you guys.
Um, Josh, your comments remind me of, I mean, like the, the information that we were gathering with the, the downtown plan and things that people were, were commenting on and, and both like celebrating and complaining about. I think one of the things that stood out as a, as a point, a pain point for people visiting downtown and using the downtown was also the, the panhandling and the homeless population and how, how that was impacting business downtown. And there was a really wonderful article in the Commons just a couple of weeks ago, maybe it was the Reformer, about how groundwork's progress in finding housing for folks was having a huge impact on numbers of people congregating downtown and creating disruptions downtown and panhandling downtown. And it was really exciting to hear that providing housing to these folks really had a change in what the, what the downtown was experiencing as far as that. I'm, I'm sure a part of it has to do with the social distancing as well, but I wonder if there is something that the planning commission can do to support the, the continued work. They were able to do that because hotels are closed and need to fill rooms and they found a great partnership there. So if, if the space is available, it's, it's really wonderful to see them using it and see how that changes what's happening downtown. I don't know if there is something we can do to support that, but.
Well, I, you know, it's funny, I was thinking about that because I'm like, what an opportunity this is to move forward. Cause we have all the homelessness housed technically right now. I mean, what if we could further that and, you know, and work for more of that permanent housing? Obviously that in itself is really tough to get to. There's no, you know, silver bullet or magic bullet. But I think one thing is definitely furthering housing efforts to create more affordable options and diversify our housing stock, because a healthy housing, I guess, diversity of housing usually equals healthy economy. So that's not just, you know, affordable and high-end, it's like the whole spectrum of housing. So creating conditions for that is really helpful, but I guess also it just continuing to work with the nonprofits. I'm not sure how that would look like for us. It's very new to me. But I mean, I just think it's a really cool opportunity that we're in, even though this is a very unprecedented crisis, to be able to house homelessness in this town. How could that look like further to really help that population get to more permanent housing?
I love this conversation so much. That's all I have to say.
So I want to, I want to, I want to build out on what Andrew said, because that's, that's kind of where my mind is going just because one of our, well, two of our values are equity and equality in the values conversation that we had in our last meeting. And all of the, the, the reading that I've been doing is focused on this notion that, that we, the US at this time and its history is, is so iniquitous. And that, and that this crisis is putting that in sort of really shocking and disturbing relief that the, that the crisis is, in fact, we're all vulnerable, but not, it's not impacting us all the same. Many of us in fact are quite safe, safe in our jobs, safe in our homes and, and safe in our ability to get picked up at the grocery store and various other sorts of things. So I, I'm thinking about ways in which, I mean, there's been a lot written about the fact that the federal government is providing relief at a level that it's never done in the past 10 or 15 years. And it's done it in a relatively speedy amount of time. It's supporting small businesses, it's enabling people to stay safe and not have to go to jobs that are, that would, that would put their health at risk. And that the, these are the kinds of things that we actually think our government, well, I'll speak for myself. I actually think our government should do on a regular basis. It shouldn't be a, require a crisis for the government to make sure that people get healthcare and that they get covered, they can go home when they're sick and not have to continue to be working when they're sick because they don't have any sick days where they work. So the sort of development of the gig economy, all of these things that have been make, made working life precarious can be walked back to a more equitable society. And this is a perfect opportunity for us to try to do that. But of course, our capacity as the planning commission is sort of limited in our, in our ability to do that. But one of the things, the one place where we actually do have some capacity to do things is in zoning. And, and zoning can be done creatively in such a way to produce more equity. So that's the sort of thing, I mean, I like, I like, like establishing the notion that an empty hotel room has a person who needs housing in it until such time as there's a paying customer in it could be a phenomenon that we now say, oh, we have these rooms. Why would they ever stand empty if people were homeless? Those are the kinds of things I think if we can, we, we can build into our system so that, so that we're not, I mean, I, I, I hope, I hope nobody's imagining going back anymore. We're not going back. We're going forward into this new era that we are going to be living in for a period of time until there's a vaccine and then for a period of time until there's another pandemic. So, so this new forward, I think, should include the base level of some kind of equity in all of our thinking.
Reminds me of something I heard about, about a town developing a vacancy tax for, for building owners. Mostly to prevent like the Home Depot building right now to just stand empty for years and years while the owners can use that as a tax write-off. It was a really interesting solution to, to helping them redevelop their downtown and incentivize building owners. This was primarily along the main street in their downtown zone. But to prevent those landowners from just hanging on to empty buildings. And I wonder if that's applicable to a hotel.
I love the idea of a vacancy tax. If we're going to tax someone, let's tax the folks who own the Home Depot building. I love that.
So other, other ideas, before we get into, I mean, we, we, we can also, things that you guys want to know that we can search out information. We saw this really, really, really interesting economic development webinar by an organization called Urban Three that I want to say, they're somewhere in the South, I can't remember. But the spokesman, the person who spoke was a guy named Joe Minakazi. And he was, he was essentially describing ways in which you should be thinking about how to make money from your town vis a vis property taxes, vis a vis zoning. So you can, he had, he had these really interesting models that essentially looked just like, it looked like the, the, the city because it had these tall structures. And then after a while, you realize it wasn't the city, it was a, it was a graph that showed where the most income was coming from the various places in your town. And in fact, apparently the Vermont Department of something, I'm sorry, I can't remember who you guys are out there in TV land, has done this for Vermont. And so we can actually look at it. And if you really wanted to, I'm sure Sue could pull it up or I could pull it up and show it to you. But it's some, one of these things, as we think about what we're capable of doing on the planning commission, to be thinking about how we can do our zoning so that we can capitalize on, because we do need the town to make money. There's nothing wrong with making money. What we want is more equitable distribution of that money, but we have to make it first. So, so that may be something that we can, that data, I, I mean, I, I would love, I would love for you all to look at the Joe Minakosi thing and then look at that data to see if it doesn't generate some interesting ideas about as we go forward, looking at our zoning, how we might be creative, like what Tom sent around right before the meeting, sort of rethinking our spaces to, to make them more useful. In the same way of figuring out how we can put tables on the sidewalk and allow people to have a beer outside so that they're, they can be six feet apart from whoever they're having a beer with.
I saw, I watched that webinar too. It was, it was really interesting. And you know, one of the things he said was, you know, what, identify policies that are restricting or, or limiting positive growth, you know? The kind of, we figure out the kind of growth we want, which I think we probably have a pretty good idea of. And then change policies that make it more difficult for, for that to happen.
Yeah, and we definitely started that conversation a few months ago with the, the, what was it called? Infill development or development within existing properties was really interesting. And I think, go ahead Felicity.
No, I was just thinking, the, the other, the one of the really cool things on his PowerPoint was this notion of the distance to the center. And that, and that you put, you put, you know, you put your community on a graph and the people who are close to the services, they live close to the services and they're, they're being really sustainable. And, and so they pay the less, least amount of tax. The people who are living on the largest plot of land, farthest away from the services, pay the most tax. And if we're having all these people who are, which apparently we are, moving in from other states, so she'll remain nameless because it's safer here, those people who are up there in the hills on 100 or 102 acres should pay the most tax. Because they're, they're farthest away from the services and, and we have to make the roads for them to get. Um, because they're, they're farthest away from the services and, and we have to make the roads for them to get to there. That was, that's the, what Joe Minakazi was talking about is. The town takes over the notion about supporting the roads. They should make the people who need the roads pay for the roads.
This is, um, he was really, he's kind of looking at like the fiscal resiliency of towns. So. You know, what are our sources of revenue? Is it property taxes? Is it the retail tax? Is it your rooms and meals or the one percent? Like what is the makeup of the town's sources of revenues? And then trying to figure out, you know, how to tweak things so that it continues to be um kind of productive. Um, so you know, the, as Felicity was saying, the Vermont Department of Taxes and I think Property Valuation, I think that's the department. You know, they've done some mapping, looking at the property value per acre. Um, Joe had shown some of the retail taxes per acre. And so the areas that you think might be. Well, you know, downtown is generally the most productive, the denser areas, the more. You know, different buildings you might have in a building because it's five stories as opposed to one single story. Um, they tend to be more productive. So then we need to make sure that our policies are kind of supporting that type of development. Or those areas that are really um doing well. Um, and then there's another interesting thing that, that um. Kind of came out, this was him from Joe's, but, but basically our grand list in Brattleboro is not growing. So how, how can we help it grow? Either through land use regulations or maybe even programs like, um, I sat in a, on a webinar in Oswego. Uh, that was about Oswego, New York and how to get the residential. They kind of looked at the different neighborhoods in the town. Those where property values were just, were increasing, those that were um stagnant and those that were actually in decline. And they focused some program, programs on that stagnant area. And it was, you know, there's. Not intending to gentrify by any means, but kind of the simple property improvements. Uh, they made some grants and loans available. And they did it kind of on a block uh method. And you know, that all had positive impact both to the property values. And also to their downtown and getting businesses to come in. So like those are kind of some of the programs that we could think about or look at too.
And we could even look to models that have already been successful here, like the um, the one that offered homeowners grants to. Uh, renovate so that there was an apartment in their house. And possibly instead of an internal apartment, that could be expanded to accessory dwelling units. Um, or things like that, that, that would be even more um useful.
Does that program not exist anymore? I haven't heard about that in a while.
Is it successful? Um, that's run through Brattleboro area housing. Um, I don't know how many applications they get from Brattleboro. Um, I know what, you know, at one point it was, um, I've had some conversations with some of their board members who are. Trying to figure out other programs that would be useful. Um, and then there's also the rental housing improvement program that is run by the town. And that one is uh for landlords that maybe need to make improvements to improve the, the quality of the housing. Um, I don't think they make many loans out of that either. I'd have to look into that.
Yeah, Tom.
I, I'll continue with the, the format that Josh was taking of going down his list of ideas, although mine is much smaller. If I may.
I'm, I'm super excited.
Um, I don't know if the zoning or the town ordinances have restrictions on business hours. Or because my thoughts are that if people need to be more spaced out. Let's say that's in an office or a manufacturing place or a lab. Not that there's many labs here, but my housemate works in one. But anyway, if they have to be spaced out more. But they want to return to work and the business is trying to return them to work and the governor is allowing it, maybe it's um. It would be good to allow for, I don't know if there's any restrictions on business hours, but maybe that could be expanded. And then also maybe there's some businesses that aren't allowed in certain places, like. Maybe um people could take not just office and computer work home, but. Maybe there's certain types of. You know, I, I, I don't know, but maybe there's certain types of work at, at the actual commercial or industrial space. That could be taken home to some degree and otherwise wouldn't be allowed because of our zoning or town ordinances. But could be during this period of time to allow that aspect of the economy to continue or rebound. Um, another one, Josh men- mentioned um more prevalence of hand sanitizers in public places. But maybe, now this would be probably, okay, well, I'm, I'm thinking masks. Um, you know, this would either be just the, this will come about just by the goodwill of businesses or the town. Or, I mean, this would be some business idea and I don't know how well it would work at when a pandemic's over, but. You know, mask dispensing machines that, you know, cost fifty cents per mask and you have to put the money in and you get the mask. But of course, you'd, you'd be pressing buttons to do that. So, so maybe it would backfire. And then what I mentioned, the expanding restaurant and bar spaces so they can rebound. And then the sanitary doors. Oh, and then one last thing, because a lot of people, the office workers and the digital. Um, you know, more white collar workers are more able to. Uh, weather the storm by working for, uh, from home than the lower income or the blue collar folks usually are. Painting a, a broad brush. I wonder if um we can have. Uh, give a, a better push to wireless facilities and broadband for the town. So, to, so that we re- we remove some hiccups and barriers to that, both for this pandemic and future ones and. Yeah. So that's my list.
Tom, I like that last one. That, that also came to my mind as I was thinking about um your, your thought about bringing work home. I'm thinking about how I used to on my work from home days, go downtown to like the Works or Amy's or Mocha Joe's and, and spend money downtown. And sit downtown and be there. And um, and I've been through a few towns in Vermont. Um, that have invested in free wireless internet for their downtown area. Um, and that's, that was a pretty amazing resource in those small towns. Um.
I thought we have that. We, we don't have that downtown? Yeah, don't we have that? I thought we did.
We have. And the library, screen wifi, but yeah, it doesn't, uh, it doesn't extend all the way. And some businesses offer it, some businesses offer it for like an hour and then. Um, but it, it would be really interesting to see the town be able to provide something like that. Um, not just for the businesses, but also for the use of public space.
Yeah.
I definitely think there's gonna be a big investment in broadband after this. Um, more, I think, and obvi- I think downtown's great and I would love to see Brattleboro take those steps, but I'm more looking at rural areas. Because one thing they're seeing in terms of trends is some people might, you know, migrate out to these rural areas. Um, in need, because they can work from home. They don't have to, you know, necessarily go in. Obviously, not everyone can have that privilege. But um, I definitely could see that happening in some of the outskirts and this probably will help the push that Wyndham Regional is doing and. Um, it'll be interesting to see uh in the next few years uh what broadband looks like in southern Vermont.
This is a, this is Kate. While, while we're kind of going down lists, if I may add two small things, I'm, I'm liking everything I've heard so far. Um, two little things I've been thinking about is a lot of businesses are, are doing like curbside to-go. Um, things like that. And not just for food, but I saw um. The shoe store is starting to do that with shoes, uh, the library with books. I, I wanted, um, I meant to check before this, but thinking about how easy it is for a business, particularly in our downtown to say. Put out a table and put to-go items on that for people to pick up. And then also how easy is it for people to park quickly? So, you know, if there's a way we can ease. Um, having say like sh- short-term temporary designated short-term parking spaces. If uh, you know, if that would, would work with the, the demand right now for that, I think that would be a, an interesting thing to look at.
Temporary loading zones. Is that kind of what you're getting at, Kate?
Yeah, lo- loading zones and, and for customers, you know, so if somebody say, I bought shoes. And now I wanna park next to the shoe store, jump out with my mask on, grab my shoes. You know, that the proprietor just put out there for me and then drive off. I'm not gonna be there more than, you know, fifteen minutes max.
I know that exists in front of Brandon Roberts and the um, uh, the florist shop and I think some, and in front of Duo Restaurant too. Um, there's, there's hooded spaces that are for exactly what you're saying, exactly for that purpose. It's great. It work, I've been using that quite a bit. It works great.
The Duo spaces go in the way for a handicap space.
Okay.
But.
That's good too. That's really needed.
Uh, so what about shutting down all the parking spaces on Main Street? I know a couple of people will be really upset with me saying that. Uh, but what about shutting down all the parking spaces for not a, a, a long amount of time, but just like, let's say a few months. While uh the governor is figuring out uh reopening the economy. Um, and this way it can give an opportunity to the businesses downtown that are slowly allowed to open back up. Uh, to do just what Kate's talking about and uh be able to drive up, grab their items and go. And if there, if we just assume all the parking spaces on Main Street, you're not allowed to park in, like the folks that live in town. Uh, Park in the Garage or Harmony or the, the High Street Lot. Um, I think some, I think folks will be pretty understanding that it's uh to build. Uh, Brattleboro businesses self-esteem backup, knowing that they're giving, given more options to deal with. The distancing protocols that are still unknown, they're still coming at us. Um. Probably a really bad idea to shut all those parking spaces down, but it's just, just an idea.
I love it.
It makes sense in terms of giving, if we, if not all of them, maybe one side of the street we keep parking. The other side, we turn into a pedestrian zone so that we would double the width of a sidewalk. So that people could actually be, I mean, I, I was thinking when you guys earlier were talking about sidewalks and I was thinking about the grocery stores, you know, the grocery stores are now one-way aisles. I mean, where our downtown sidewalks could be one-way. You are, on the right-hand side, it's all going down. On the left-hand side, it's all going back up. Um, I mean, because, you know, I mean, that, that does stop people crossing each other. And, and that's what you can't, that's, that's the thing that makes you feel unsafe is when somebody's coming at you and there's nowhere for you to go. Um, but anyway, I mean, I'm, I'm curious, Sue, to what extent can we affect parking regulations?
I, I'm gonna play devil's advocate here, um, and just throw out some questions because if you were going to make this proposal to the select board, they're sure gonna wanna know these answers. So, okay, so there's no parking or it's free parking? Which are you talking about? There's, there's.
I, I would.
Are you talking about Main Street or are you talking all of downtown? No, I think what I'm thinking of is.
Let's start with Main Street.
Yeah, no parking on Main Street. Uh, and then free parking in all of town for, that's a whole different item though. The free parking downtown um for a healthy amount of time. And the, what I mean by healthy is once our businesses are boosted again and feeling really good and comfortable. And not uh scared of needing to shut down, then we can start with, uh, then we can start potentially charging for parking in all of downtown. So I think uh for the, the to-go uh ordering and like the pickups of food and the pickups of shoes and the pickup of, of bicycles and stuff. No parking on Main Street because that'll allow a lot of space for people to walk. Some eateries can have some tables outside and then people can do their, their drive-up uh pickup. Uh, uh, what Kate was mentioning.
Okay, so I think there's a couple of things you need to think about. I think we would need to know what do the merchants want? Because a lot of them will say that they want parking in front of their buildings. It doesn't matter that they have an entrance on Harmony Lot. They still want it out front. Um, so that's something to consider. Um, in terms of free parking throughout the downtown or, I mean, that's where you have to pay to park. We have some parking lots and we, elsewhere in town, but. For all intents and purposes, free parking. So there are four employees that have been furloughed from that. That parking fund helps um deal with maintenance at the garage. So what is that shortfall gonna be? And what's the impact taxpayers if, um, if that revenue is not coming in? Um, I think we need to look at enforcement because if you don't have the parking, if you have the employees that are still for, furloughed. You're assuming there's no um enforcement. Um, it sounds great that people would want to do it for the good of downtown. But I think the research shows otherwise, that the people are, who are not there shopping are, might be parking there. Um, because they don't wanna have to walk from High Street for the free parking or whatever. Um, so there are just some things to think about before you would make any recommendation before the select board. You'd have to totally vet it.
And that would be something.
And the, the parking study from twenty eighteen because it does get into, it talks a little bit about kind of calibrating parking rates and that kind of thing.
Does that study tell us how much money, how much we bring in from parking?
It does look at the revenues. Yeah.
That's okay.
I can um send you a link to it all. It's on the planning department website. And on the right-hand side, if you scroll all the way down on the right, there's kind of like a document section and it's in there.
Um, do we have a study of the revenue that we gain from our Brattleboro businesses? So my argument to the select board would be losing twenty percent of our Brattleboro businesses, the revenue we gain off of their taxes. Um, may way outweigh the revenue that we gain from parking meters. So do we know what revenue uh we get from Brattleboro-based businesses? The. That, that would be my argument. It's like, it's the select board weighing, you know, it's like, okay, are we gonna charge for parking and make up that much money? Or are we gonna not charge for, for parking, induce business and not lose a bunch of businesses?
But that assumes.
Oh, you both talked at the same time. I wanna hear both of you.
Yeah, go ahead, Chris.
Well, that would assume that parking's a major reason that the business may or may not make it. And I think there's, you know, there's so many other factors. Which I know you know more about it than I do for success. I mean, parking's only one, one factor and probably. Somewhat small.
Um, it's definitely a concern. To people that don't uh own a business downtown, it's definitely small. But the, one of the things that keeps coming up is free parking downtown. Um, and so I'm totally on board with it and it makes sense to me. I absolutely understand the town will lose parking revenue. But I think it's a sacrifice we should be willing to make because it's either lose parking revenue or potentially lose a bunch of businesses. So I'm willing to make that sacrifice. And I, this is just. This is me relaying information from downtown business owners.
And they argue that if, if parking were free, that would induce more people to come and shop.
Yep, absolutely, without a doubt.
Well, if the protocol in order to do.
Survey in the parking study. Sorry. Go ahead, Felicity.
I, I was just gonna say, if, if this, if this is something, I'm not even, it, it, it sound, is, this is something that the planning commission is gonna present. As a kind of incentive. Not, at first of all, I'm not entirely sure that we could do that, but I, I mean, we, all of us as independent people can present whatever we want to the select board. Um. They would, they could, I mean, we, we would have to have data that demonstrated that that was the case. And I don't know that we have the da- data.
Well, no, it'd be similar to like uh what Jess was talking about. We have data now that prove that if you house homeless people. Um, you have less of a loitering issue on our downtown, you know, so it's these, these circumstances that get, provide that, that. So so these these circumstances that get provide that that, you know. So um the one percent sales option tax is just an insult to Brattleboro businesses. Um parking downtown, it's always been there, paying for parking downtown has always been there. Um but the the fees keep going up and the the uh hourly rates keep going up. Which absolutely, when it comes to a town of twelve thousand people, the the percentage of the twelve thousand that actually shop down is super small. And the biggest complaint from consumers not going downtown is paying for parking and how expensive the parking ticket is, you know, so uh that's super hard data to obtain. But maybe after this, once we go for forth with it, uh maybe we'll have that data and we can have something to show the select board and be like, hey, this is how damaging paying for parking downtown is. The revenue and the tax taxes that we make up of these businesses um from not having uh paid parking downtown is incredibly beneficial, you know, like it could be beneficial for us to find, to learn this now, potentially. But no, there's no data.
I think that everybody should read the parking study, there was a survey done. Um you know, we should all just look through it before we undertake something like this. I think, uh you know, the select board's gonna want data, they're gonna wanna know, you know, we're gonna have to put everything together if that's something that you wanna pursue, but um we need more than an argument, um we're gonna need hard data and they might even wanna study it some more. Um I'm sorry that the parking study and all its findings and and all the survey stuff is not just right here in my head. I don't have that kind of recall or memory, but um it was done in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, it's not old. Um merchants were talked to and, you know. I just think, I I mean, I'm kind of with Prudence that there are a lot of factors as to whether or not these businesses are gonna make it. I'm not sure how big of a puzzle, or you know, piece of that puzzle is parking. But let's all look at the study.
One, I wanna drop one more comment on that. And um so I, many years ago, when I worked at a downtown business, I attended the downtown business meetings, this is like ten years ago. And ten years ago, parking and free parking and paying for parking was also a topic of contention. And with downtown business owners, you know, when Irene hit um with the recession, that was always one of the points that came up in conversation that they wanted to ask the town for. And I'm, you know, I'm not sure, there may be data, there may not be data. I don't know if it came up as one of the barriers to having a good time downtown in our downtown survey recently. Um but the perception in the downtown business community, I think, is really tied to we will feel supported if the town acts on this. And feeling supported and feeling that solidarity that the town has um on this issue. I mean, that also could be a really important element in a business succeeding or wanting to succeed or wanting to stay here.
Thank you so much for saying that, Jen, I couldn't agree more. And one of the uh some of the businesses that I'm talking to downtown, the perception that they have of Big T Town Brattleboro um is that the the town doesn't even know that, the the town's not even aware that they even exist, you know, and that's pretty unfortunate. Um especially too, like there's the uh some folks that feel that the amount that they offer to the town um is uh is worth uh the town considering some things like not charging for some, to to me, some simple things like not charging for parking. You know, we we right now in a time like this, like in, you know, in COVID twenty twenty, uh these are definitely scary times and these are hard conversations to have. Uh a thing that's as simple as parking downtown and paying for parking downtown, it seems uh redundant and like a waste of time, but it's really, really not. It's a lot about perception. Um a a parking ticket downtown is ten bucks or twenty dollars if you forget to pay it over two weeks. It's like a dollar an hour, that does not seem like a lot, but it is actually a lot. It's a lot of perception, it is actually a lot of money for some folks, you know, it is a lot of discouragement for other folks, you know. And that's not what we, we can't be discouraging anyone right now, you know, we need to be nurturing and supporting and patting people on the back and saying, hey, we're really glad you're here, we're really glad you're making sales, we're really glad your taxes are coming back to this community. You know, and that's exactly what we need to be doing right now.
So just wanna add though, I, go ahead, Felicity.
No, I mean, I was just thinking, I mean, if 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 what you're, what you guys are talking about is a sort of i- i- incentive program um for to sort of, you know, he- help help businesses by by making them feel like we're trying to support them in whatever way we can. Then that seems that 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 seems like a much better ask to the select board than to go and say, we think that this is gonna be beneficial. I like the idea, much better to say, we actually think that this is a, this is a thorn in people's side. It's clearly documented as a thorn in people's side, here's a time to be pulling the thorns out of people's sides. We don't think we're gonna lose very much by it, let's do this. Regardless of whether or not we have any data that demonstrates that it's actually gonna be profitable for these businesses in the end. It's more that it's gonna help us in terms of our feeling like we're working with each other as opposed to opposed to each other, that seems to make much more sense, I like that idea. But I I think it should be a package, I think we should do other sorts of things too. I don't think we should just go to the select board and say, we should cancel pa- parking. Um I think I think there has to be a sort of this notion that we wanna, we wanna try to make businesses feel like they've been heard. I was struck by the few that we got the BDCC data, they have not heard from very many businesses. Um uh there are not very many businesses in Brattleboro have taken that survey. So I I I still feel as if I'm quite uncertain about and and that most of the data that the data that I found that was valuable that coming out of the BDCC was what they had done vis a vis the Brookings Institute. That Brookings Institute had gone through and and classified businesses of of immediate risk, medium-term risk and long-term risk. And essentially, I mean, everybody is a long-term risk, I mean, so we're all, we are all at risk, I mean, because this is gonna be the long term. Um so we should be thinking really innovatively about other sorts of things, because since we're all at risk, how can we all work together to to make each other feel better, which might even be just the thing we need in order to survive. Might not actually cost a dime.
Um yeah, so I was totally amazed that Brattleboro has almost a thousand uh registered businesses. That's amazing. Um I'm super curious to know, obviously, no one can predict the future and no one knows facts on anything. But I'm really curious on what percentage of those businesses were uh potentially going to lose in a month from now. You know, is it twenty five, is it is it five percent, is it twenty-five percent, is it fifty percent? Um I was definitely very discouraged by the BDCC uh information. Also, it seems like there's barely a hundred businesses that they're working with in Brattleboro. You know, the work they're doing in Bennington is fine, the work they're doing in Bellas Falls is fine, around Wyndham County. My focus is Brattleboro and like what we have here and the potential and the opportunity that we have here. And there's absolutely businesses slipping through the cracks and that's incredibly frustrating. Um because uh we're better than that, you know, we can do this, we can get through this, you know. If we all work together, we can absolutely get ahead of the game. And I, uh if I saw the numbers correctly, they're only working with a hundred businesses in in Brattleboro. So what are the?
It's not working with, that was a self-reported survey, it doesn't indicate who they're working with, it was just a survey.
Yeah, so either way, I feel like the data is lacking uh royally. So can the town, we have this huge list, we have a list of a thousand businesses. I'm assuming we have phone numbers and emails, contact information, names. Can Brattleboro do our own data collection is something I'm super curi-
I I mean, we can, we have that access and, I mean, we have, we have that contact information. We could, I think we could survey, they might not respond to us as a planning commission, but we could, or the planning department.
And we could survey, um it's gonna depend, you know, there's cost, there's staff time when we've got other projects that we need to think about. We wanna not be redundant and we need to know what are we using that data for? I mean, I think that there's a lot of information out there, we know who's struggling, we know that we might, you know, why are we going out to survey? What are you trying to get out of it? Because I don't wanna survey for survey's sake. Um you know, I I don't disagree, a hundred businesses responding to a survey, that's not great. We could have helped put out, push out the information, but I don't wanna survey for survey's sake.
But what if that survey?
No, I think the planning commission's job is really kind of a longer-term recovery and right now, I feel like we're still like in the emergency right now. And, you know, I don't think that we're gonna, we're we're can tweak policy or make suggestions for policy for the longer-term recovery, which we might be enduring now, but what are we gonna do with that data?
You're an optimist, I like that.
I I feel like uh doing some of our own data collection would be hugely important and relevant and asking come, asking businesses in this area, what is your, what are your biggest concerns right now? Where are your biggest shortfalls? Like what is it? Um like how many months of this can you endure before you throw in the towel? You know, like um the data that I saw on the BDCC, like it didn't tell me anything that I I don't already know. And it also actually told me less information than what I was excited to see, you know, or learn about. Um I have a lot of questions for businesses, you know, and like simple things, like what is, what is your biggest concern right now? And what can the town do to support you in that? And it's super simple things, even if we don't act on anything, it's at least we have that information and we can make more educated uh more educated uh maneuvers to helping our future if we do things like that. And I don't, I don't know what it would take, it obviously costs some money. But to put a survey out there and email it to all thousand businesses and just see what their needs are, see how they're doing, see where I don't know, I don't know what it looks like, you know, I don't know exactly what questions to ask. I could come up with them if I know that this is something we're moving forward with. But until I know.
I cannot sit here tonight and say that this is something that the department can do. If, you know, if we wanna give some thought as to what questions would be and how it would be, I, you know, I'm willing to do that. Or have you guys do the legwork, but you know, we do have, you know, this is kind of a, and I understand it's 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 extraordinary times, but we have the municipal planning grant that's gotta get done by the end, by mid-July. That's been pushed back, I've got some other projects on the plate. So it's not something that the department can fully take on, but lots of boards and commissions, you know, do work on the side too and and feed that information in. So if if that's something that you guys wanna start thinking about, um you know, I just can't fully staff something like that. I'm fairly sure I can give some more thought to it, but and I'm not, I'm not trying to like totally squash it, if you guys want to to kind of put some thought into questions and feed them in and, you know, have another work session to get it done. I mean, the other thing is that you can't meet without a warrant meeting if you have a forum. But I'm just being realistic about what the department has on and, um you know, where it may fit. But I think we need to give some real serious thought as to what are we gonna do with that? I I just really, I'm not a fan of surveying just to survey.
So I have a, I have a, I have a question, because I mean, and this is based on complete and utter ignorance. Um if you were, if you're a business owner in Brattleboro and you feel like your voice is not being heard, where do you go?
Um I mean, could go to the select board, um you could speak to the town manager.
Is that nor, is that the norm in most towns? Is that what 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 people do?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we don't have an economic development department. Um even our planning department is not so much a community development department. So so yeah, I mean, you could go speak to any of the town administration.
But they don't, or do they?
I don't, I don't know if they do, um I've not had those conversations.
Maybe they should be encouraged to, if people are, you know, suffering in silence, they should. I mean, there's a lot of participation at select board meetings and, you know, there's a lot of opportunity for input. Um but maybe that's one word we need to get out to businesses is, let it, you know, if you're having problems, let people know. Let the town know.
It um, I mean, I think the other thing, I just, I I know I'm I'm being super negative. But from a town government perspective, like, okay, this is kind of a big month, mid-May, fourth quarter property taxes are due. We don't know the scope of the impact. Um we, you know, property taxes could be way down. So is the priority that we wanna try to keep people in housing? Um because if the, if the landlords aren't paying their property taxes, you know, so do we need a program for that? Or do we need a program for business, or do we need both programs? But what what kind of funding do we even have for it? So I just wanna keep that in mind and know we're focused right now on the businesses, but there are those other impacts that are gonna be coming that you know, we don't know what they are yet.
So as far as um some information collection, um I've been participating with the state of New Hampshire through work. Um on, they have an advisory committee for how the state's allocated uh CARES Act fund is going to go to supporting the economic and health survival of the state. Um so I've collected letters from my community that have been sent to that advisory committee on what to do with the funds. Is there anything that's similar to that in Vermont that uh Governor Scott is doing with um creating an advisory council or collecting public comment on how those emergency funds are gonna end up being spent? And can we piggyback on that?
Not that I'm aware of, I know that, I know that ACCD in the early days were collecting a survey. Uh or they were, they did do a survey. There is some discussion about um the state coming up like co- coordinating a program that would um for towns that have unrestricted funds from their revolving loan funds um from Vermont Community Development Program. They are looking at kind of creating some sort of program. Um but we don't have the details on that yet. Um and that program may have come out of the surveying that ACCD did. But I'm not, I'm not familiar with an advisory council, I can check.
So I'm just doing a time check, it's coming up on seven thirty. Um we were gonna talk a little bit about values and a little bit about zoning, but um uh how how are people feeling?
So it it feels like we should close on the last topic we've talked about. And then I wonder if for the next topic, if the zoning changes, maybe should um be talked about next ahead of the values, because since I, it my understanding from the feedback last time is that the values is something that um you know, will be a longer conversation. So I wonder if that means we should talk about zoning next, I know zoning's third, but maybe it should be second in the agenda, that's just an idea.
Totally fine with me, I th- I I only wanted to keep it on the agenda just because when we're talking about with the idea was when we're talking about zoning, we wanna sort of be thinking about the values that we've we've put uh that we've decided as a group we are our most important.
Oh, I see, okay, yeah.
Okay, if like each of us read one of them so that we get back on the same page with what they are and then we move on to the without, if we move along to the same conversation.
Before we, before we shift topics, so I'm wondering how we should c- close the previous conversation. So we had a lot of ideas generated for how we might help. Um but I, you know, I wanted to hear like, you know, how do you guys wanna close that conversation? Is there, were there, was there anything where we want to recommend staff? Look at something specific, do we want to vote on any of those ideas? I'd been thinking about again, because I feel like we're in a, you know, immediate crisis, if there's anything that staff would recommend like, here's one of the ideas you guys had and this is something we could easily recommend or really, you know, easily pull off the the list and possibly make that actionable. But what do you guys think?
I look forward to some action, um, especially because of the short term and the long term crisis that we're in.
So Josh, how do you, how do you want to go? Um, I mean, we have, oh, I have to go back and look at my notes.
I mean, it's, it's not up to me, you know, like, this is a, this is a group effort. Um, I'm definitely discouraged.
Well, I guess I'm asking you and then, you know, other people chiming in. I mean, there was, there's, there is the question of the 1%. And I, again, I, I don't know, I mean, I think some of this stuff is not really our purview. Um, but, um, we can, you know, if there's a, there's a sense among the commission that we really want to make a statement about this, we can write a letter. Um, which is, you know, not the strongest action that one can take. Um, and then parking would seem to me to be the ones that were the most, that had the most immediate action, uh, attached to them. If I'm missing one, let me know, because, um, and the cleanup, I mean, I will, I, I will say, Josh, on the cleanup issue, um, the, you know, Bama has been working on a various, a number of different fronts. And one of the newest fronts is trying to put together a, a core of volunteers. Um, because there's a lot of people, Bama has produced, you know, gotten a lot of people excited about volunteering, but then people there haven't been immediate needs, so there's just a lot of volunteers without anything to do.
Good problem to have.
What?
Good problem to have.
Yeah, exactly. Um, so there's a, there's now, uh, there's now a, a volunteer corps, or at least there's the idea of a volunteer corps that, and the town is, is funneling jobs that can be done by volunteers to the, to Bama, to then send them out to the community so that people can work under the auspices of the town at various jobs like cleaning things, painting things, doing various other things, all above board and legal, because there's a lot of legalities around doing work like that. Um, so that is, so, so just so you know, that is happening. Um, and, and I hope that it'll, it'll result in, in some cleanliness. I don't know. But anyway, um, what, so how, how do we, how do we, how do we move ahead with, with this conversation we've had?
I obviously see the ineffectiveness of writing a letter to the Select Board, but I definitely feel like we should. Um, if everyone is in agreeance on these, uh, uh, on these ideas. Um, you know, I feel like, uh, I wish we could have a much stronger impact right now. Uh, because people are looking for action right now. Obviously, this is a slow, slow process and the bureaucracy behind it. So I really, really encourage everybody to email Peter Elwell and the entire Select Board and let them know where you're at with things. That seems like one of the, the stronger moves to make. Um, I've been doing a lot of that, and I don't know if I'm being lessened to. And I definitely need supportive, support in that. Uh, so I would love to move forward with all of these things, you know, and I, my biggest thing, like, uh, uh, definitely a little bummed with Sue's, uh, comments about data collection. I definitely feel like Brattleboro, the town of Brattleboro, we could do our own data collection and just be really prepared for the future if we just knew what businesses want. I still don't know. I, I know what businesses that I talk to want and need, you know, but I want to know what all thousand businesses in Brattleboro want and need, you know, to where they can stay on top of this, to where we don't lose anybody. You know, I would love to have 100% of our businesses be in business in, in 2021, you know? So what can the town do, uh, to assist with that? I don't know. We need that data. The BDCC hasn't supplied it, so what can we do to obtain that? If it seems too big of a project or there's no funds there, I guess I'll live with that answer. Um, so for now, I don't, I don't know how you guys want to move forward. Um, I think let's, I want to put the, put it in your hands to say how, how we do this and see what you are all inspired to do.
Josh, if I can propose something, maybe, maybe you can start doing some of the legwork with doing a draft of what you think this survey might look like. And then, and then when you have, you know, the foundation of that fleshed out, then we'll, I mean, I think I have a sense of what you're saying, but we'll have a better sense and we'll be closer to knowing, like, is this a feasible thing? Will this be constructive? How will people receive it? And then we can really plug in our input and make it potentially a group, group effort.
Okay, I can, I can easily do that, and it's not even a big survey. I, I foresee 10 questions, you know, maybe less. Uh, and so something pretty simple, and I can easily do that for sure.
So I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm happy to, 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 I'll have, in, in the end of the week, I'll have a little bit more bandwidth. Um, actually, a good deal more. Um, so I'm happy, I mean, I, it makes, I, I, I think that the commission moves can take this on, um, in the absence of, of, of staff time. Um, it does seem like a valuable thing. I, I, like you, Josh, I, I find the absence of real information about how these thousand businesses are managing. Um, or any, some anecdotal information about some of them and not a great deal that, that gives us a coherent sense. Although I will, I'm gonna, I'm gonna toss a, a wet blanket in and, and while I applaud the idealism in keeping all of our businesses afloat to 2021, that is a very, very, very heavy lift right now. Um, because it just seems, it's, I mean, it's, it's, we've been in tough times before COVID. And, and now we're, now we're in this. So we can keep that as our, as our lodestar, but I think, um, we, we might not be successful in that.
But if we do, though, at least we can say that we tried.
But, I mean, is everybody in agreement? I mean, I'm happy to, I, I have once, once before gotten involved in doing a survey, and I will say it's extremely hard, um, to, to ask the right kind of questions so that you get the right kind of data. Um, and you don't get, um, different sorts of answers that don't really tell you anything. Um, so if, if we had at least, I, I see that Andrew put Google Sheets into the chat box, and that seems like something. Um, but if there's some, one, one of you, um, non-staff members who have any kind of, uh, training on, on how to survey, if you would volunteer a few minutes to review whatever the questionnaire, um, is produced, that would be really helpful. Jessica, are you nodding your head?
Yes.
Great. Okay. Let's try to do-
And I think Andrew, Andrew and I can give some time. I just can't be taking on a survey all, you know, coming out of the department. I want it to come from the Planning Commission. We can, you know, make use of our lists, get it out there, but it, it's just not something that's, you know, we can handle by ourselves at this time.
I, we can, if we can put together a survey and, and get it, I mean, we could do it by this week and get it out by the beginning of next week. Then, um, depending upon the responses, we might be able to, uh, call a special meeting and look at it if it, if it seems as if the responses give us something that we might feel we want to do in between now and June. I'm struggling with the purview of the Planning Commission and what, you know, what our role is and what we can really affect. But I guess, first of all, I think that's a really aggressive timeframe to try to design a, you know, well-designed survey. And I've been involved with a lot of surveys and, you know, it's easy to ask the questions on how you get the data back and can analyze. It can be really difficult if it's not designed well. Um, and even if it is designed well, it's still time consuming. And I just, I just feel that we should touch base with the Select Board to see whether this is something they're, you know, would this be helpful for them to hear about this? Because we are stepping out of our normal role, as I understand it. Well, we can, I, we can ask for data. That seems to be about the one thing that we're, we're really on safe ground doing is asking for information is one of the things that we're, we are charged over and over and over again, ask for data. And then make recommendations based upon that data.
And we can make, uh, recommendations, we can make recommendations on policy and things like that. But what are the things, Sue, that we specifically can change?
Can I just real quickly say something? Sorry, I just don't want to forget. Sorry, the Google Forms will create graphs and analyze the data for you. So just FYI, it does save time. I've used it in projects in school with like two weeks. I mean, it's amazing. So I just wanted to make sure that you guys understand that. If you need a tortu- a tutorial, I can always get on the phone with someone and help them out. I just wanted to say that real quick.
Thank you. So.
So, uh, what can the Planning Commission actually change? I'm just trying to go through, I mean, you make policy recommendations, so land use regulations. We write the regulations, but ultimately they're passed by the Select Board. Same with the town plan. But, um, so, yeah, I can't really think of something off the top of my head that, um, you have direct-
According to the chart.
Authority to change.
Yeah, we don't do anything. We only, I have it right here, you know?
That's not true. You do a lot.
No, I mean, no, I mean, everything we do is we, we, we send stuff to the Select Board. We send some, we don't, there's, there is nothing that we actually, I mean, you know, if we do our job well, the Select Board accepts what we do. But, but we have to do things within the purview that we're, have a responsibility for in order for them to agree with what we do. If we go off the rails.
And that's, I think that's why I'm pushing so hard. You know, if we're gonna, if we're gonna undertake, if you're gonna make suggestions on parking, we need to understand what are the ramifications, because we want to do a good job so that you have success at the Select Board.
But that's, Sue, to argue with you a little bit, that's in normal circumstances. We're not faced with normal circumstances right now. Um, and so I feel that like we need to be thinking outside of our comfort zones and outside of our boxes uh, to be as supportive as possible. You know, so normally, like, in 2019, you know, we go to the Select Board, do we make recommendations? They can approve it or deny it or whatever they decide to do. Um, but now we're, we're in different, different circumstances now. So I feel like it's gonna take different, uh, tools and mechanisms to make things happen and make things work. And that's what I'm excited to work with everybody, you know, on the Planning Commission in doing. You know, like, obviously, we're limited and our hands are tied in some situations, and we don't really do anything. We're, we're not really that effective. But what if we can have a little bit of an effect? You know, that's, that's what I'm hoping that we, we can get out of this.
I, I hear you. I, um, I like big ideas. I, I just would respectfully disagree that it, that we can't just go in with a big idea. It has to be, you know, because the, the Select Board has a responsibility to all taxpayers. So they're gonna want to know what are the effects. It's just my recommendation.
So if we were to make a recommendation on, say, free parking, we would need to have data on how that would impact, uh, availability of parking. We would need information from downtown businesses on, uh, how that would make them feel or how that might impact their business. We would need to, uh, reflect some sort of fiscal plan for the positions that are currently furloughed and the care of the municipal, uh, parking lot structure. Um, so is that-
I don't know about the furloughed employees, but definitely, what are the responsibilities and-
We need to have that data in place, uh, before we make a recommendation to the Select Board.
Well, I think there's a couple of ways, I mean, if you're gonna go in with a hard proposal to say free parking, then I think we need to strategize over how, you know, what kind of information you think would be useful. Um, I think the other tactic you could take is put together a letter with, you know, like, we had a long discussion at our Planning Commission meeting. There's this, this, and this. Are there anything that you're interested in that, you know, you want us to do some research on? That's another tact. It's maybe not as, um, direct, because you're asking them to say, hey, where can we be helpful, but that's another possibility.
I think that that might be a lovely, lovely first step, because we really have all this energy. We have all these ideas. Um, writing a letter to the Select Board that sort of outlines a couple of different ideas where we could spend our time and energy and getting feedback from them on what would be most helpful to help them make a decision and move forward in prioritized order. That would be awesome. What do you guys think?
I like it. I worry about how long that'll take, but I really like it.
I like it too.
Yep, I like that idea as well.
I like that idea as well, but the one thing that I really don't want to let go of is I really don't want to let go of our principal rule. I mean, our, what we can do as a Planning Commission and what we're required to do by Vermont statute is, is plan. Um, and is take this crisis in the moment and really try to think in the same way creatively that we've been thinking about the present about the next 15 to 20 years. Because now is the time that we could really be making some structural shifts that would have long-term benefits, um, and prevent us from getting into another situation that we're in right now. Um, I'm all for trying to deal with the immediate crisis, but I also think it's so important to, to always be thinking ahead, and that is, after all, what planning is about. So I'm happy to do that with the next, you know, week or so. But then I really want, I really want to, to dig into the data and the information and the zoning so that we can really start thinking, um, what Brattleboro 2030 is gonna look like.
I, I think that, I think that point's well taken, Felicity. I've been thinking also about, you know, if, if we do lose businesses, which I think, you know, is likely to happen, and, you know, folks have trouble, say, making their rent and their mortgages. I've been thinking about what does that look like long-term? So when you're thinking about a recovery and businesses are reopening, where people are starting new businesses, you know, how does zoning play into that as well?
Right.
Sorry, Josh, I cut you off there.
No, 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 you're, you're totally fine, Kate. I'm curious, Felicity, can, so that I'm thinking about it from here on out, can you just give me an example? Like, give me one of your ideas, just so I have like a baseline, so I have an, an idea of like where you're at, where your, where your mind is going.
Well, I'm thinking about, you know, if more, if more people are coming to the state, um, because they've discovered, their bosses have discovered, hey, you can work remotely now 24/7. Um, and it's safer here and you can social distance without even trying. Um, and so all of a sudden, people are gonna be buying up, uh, land. Um, and people are gonna want to, you know, they want a chunk of, of Vermont of their own. So they want five acre, ten, 10 acre parcels. Um, and they, but they don't want to work them. And we have a lot of people in the state who survive off of livestock and haying and various other sorts of things. So we have to pay attention to the right, right to farm, um, the pig smell, that cows make noises, that hay bailers make noises. Um, that if you're gonna be driving around on your SUV, then you ought to be paying extra money for the cars, for the roads that are gonna get, you know, screwed up. Um, and all, all that stuff that, that there are going to be changes now that are gonna be happening. And we would like, you know, if people are gonna be moving here, we want them to move right into town. We want to be able to expand our town and get more mixed-use housing. We want to have nice zoning that, that creates the notion that somebody can get a house. They can put an accessory dwelling moving on it. They can make rent off of their accessory dwelling unit. They can live on an acre or half an acre. Um, and then they can ride their bike out to the beautiful rural countryside where the cows are. Um, and, and I think we can, we can incentivize that through zoning, um, and through foresight. So that's, that's what I'm thinking.
Sounds like growth management to me, Felicity.
No, that's perfect. That's an excellent example. Um, and I also, to piggyback off of that, but then also to bring up what Tom was saying before, you know, like, this is the first pandemic we've seen, you know, there's gonna be another one. So if we can start preparing for the next one, you know, uh, if we can have these systems in place and just be one step ahead next time, um, that's something else we should also be talking about and discussing and planning for.
Yeah, and to, and to doubly piggyback off that, even if some of these things, um, you know, like, uh, like, um, a land use reg zoning change, um, that makes a pandemic- that makes, uh, pandemic less severe here or acute. I think a lot of those things would also have the same effect of just reducing normals, normal sort of illness, sick days amongst the, the populace of the town. Hate to keep bringing up the doorknob thing, but for example, that with that, um, you know, just maybe a, a nice side effect of that, that won't get me, you know, all, all the, all the pizzazz of, you know, the media attention. But is that maybe just less people get colds from each other as a result of something like that? And we'll just have a healthier populace as a result of changes like that. It'll be a slow incremental thing that's not, not as, not as sexy as, you know, preventing the pandemic, but just an overall raising of, of general health.
No, it's awesome that you say that because I was listening to VPR the other day. You, uh, you may have caught it. Some folks here may have caught it, but they were talking about literally healthy towns and cities. Developers, uh, creating towns and cities that are actually healthy for you to live in. We don't, we're not creating those right now. Um, you know, like, uh, uh, with air filtration systems, with not touching doorknobs, like you're talking about, Tom, like all these little things that we can be doing to make Brattleboro actually a healthy place to live. Um, instead of a scary, you know, germ, germy, uh, potentially hazardous place. Uh, I'll see if I can find that VPR and email it around also. I don't even know how to search back in their history and figure it out, but it was actually really, really interesting about development and the future of cities mostly. And how to, how to make residents actually healthy by living there.
Just to give you a heads up, if you, one of those things is less parking, less cars. And I know you guys had a big conversation about it. Obviously with COVID-19 changes things. But I wanted to say this earlier, free parking is going to immediately put the cars ahead of pedestrians, just to let you know. Um, there's a great book by, uh, UCLA professor. It kind of goes into the whole thing about free parking, but obviously these are different times. But when you talk about healthy cities, for me, the first thing I think of is less car.
I was concerned about that too, because then we, we'd really like people cycling and walking to town more, taking the bus to a point and riding in, that kind of stuff.
I want to go back to a couple of things on your list, maybe before, that I kind of see as maybe we could move them along kind of fairly quickly, but at least provide the information to the slot. Um, I thought the idea of opening up the sidewalks, um, you know, liquor licensing, you know, and maybe, maybe letting, letting restaurants use town sidewalk because not everybody has, is, got their private property. On the west side of Main Street, some of it is private property, like where the works puts out tables and stuff. But on the east side, it's pretty much town sidewalk. So I thought that is kind of interesting, kind of researching the liquor license and figuring out, making a suggestion, or maybe it's the parklets. Because when we did see parklets, there were lots of restaurants that would take up spaces. So if there is less car activity downtown, then maybe, you know, for the summer, we're gonna, maybe they could allow some parklets for outdoor dining. I know in New Hampshire, when they're opening up restaurants, it's outdoor first. Um, they're not opening up the indoor. So who knows when restaurants in Vermont do anything other than takeout, it might look the same. In which case lots of restaurants might want some outside space. So I thought that was interesting. Even exploring, you know, maybe putting some temporary bike lanes in, um, especially when traffic is low. That, that might be another thing that you might want to take forward. And of course, the public buildings, we can look into that. Tom, on the, you know, what, what we want to do about the doors, handles and that kind of thing.
So can I just say, Kate, Kate put a note in the chat, um, uh, that she needs to go at, at eight. So is there anything that we need to do before Kate drops out?
Yeah, sorry, I have a responsibility for one child on my three this evening, so I have to get her in bed by eight.
It's okay. Um, it's possible that this whole comp, the whole web meeting might drop off, but I'm hoping it's gonna give me a chance to extend it.
Oh, you mean it might, it might expire at eight?
Yeah, I'm not sure if I did it to eight or 8:30 and I'm, I'm trying to poke around to see if I can extend the meeting room.
So if it disappears, should we all just wait to get an email from you?
Do you all have access to email? Cause I will send you an immediate email.
Yeah, I'm also gonna have to go in just five minutes, so.
So, so, so can, can we just say, you know, lit, if, if, can I, can I ask you to do something, Sue? If we, list, list out the things that, that, that we think are, um, there's sort of general consensus around pushing them forward to the select board along the lines that, um, you outlined and sort of, we want to make these recommendations. And if you see anything on here you think would be valuable for us to put work forward on, we'll work forward on them. And then, um, and then that, so that's, that's one, the letter with, for the immediate urgent needs. The second is the question on the survey. Do we, have we decided we don't want to do the survey? Or do we want to investigate what a survey might look like?
I think in the letter.
I think I heard you say you did want to do a survey.
Um, Jess brought up a good point. Maybe in the letter, before we jump the gun on a survey, maybe in the letter to the select board, we ask them if they see any value in a surveying our list, the town's list of registered Brattleboro business owners. Cause I know more than a hundred will respond to it.
Okay, yeah, okay. So then, so then based upon, based upon the minutes from this meeting, which are obviously better than my notes. Drafting a letter. And then how do we, when we drafted the letter before you, we've drafted it, we've sent it around, everybody has signed off on it and then it's gone to the select board. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, who wants to take the lead on drafting the letter? If nobody volunteers, then I have to do it.
I can absolutely help.
Okay, all right, I will.
I can, I cannot write to, I would definitely support you in it for sure.
Sue, so will you send me the list of things and then I'll draft some kind of language to surround them and then I'll send it out?
Yes.
You guys, not to the select board. Okay. Go. Um, we don't have anything we have to vote on then. Do we want to, um, move, somebody want to move to table the, the values and, and zoning to the next month's meeting?
I have a crazy question.
Yeah.
Should we meet before, uh, June whatever, June 2nd, June 1st?
We always can, yes.
I feel like, um.
Yeah, and just, just a note about that, the June 1st meeting is going to be about the downtown plan. We need to meet to be able to get it in a place to get it out to the public. So.
Yeah, I feel like.
Felicity and I had talked about that. So if you do, do you want to meet again, we can.
I feel like this conversation is really good and it's really important to be, to be talking more and to be acting more. And, uh, and I think meeting more goes along with all of that because I think the things on our agenda that we didn't get to, I would love to see keep moving.
I'm totally into meeting twice a month, easily. I know that's difficult for a lot of people, but the time for like the next three months, if we meet twice a month and we see there's an end in sight, maybe it'll be that much more doable.
Okay, so in, in two weeks' time, can everybody make Monday? I'm pulling up my calendar because I can't. Monday, the 18th.
I possibly can. I, I would need to check with my, uh, my husband on childcare, but possibly, yep.
Okay.
Yes, I can.
I, I can.
Yes, I can.
Okay, super. So we'll, we'll meet on Monday, um, May 18th, hoping you can join us, Kate and Kathy, since Kathy's not here.
Would it be? Did, um, I wonder if plugging into the equation of our to-dos would be, um, like a, a subcommittee of, you know, under the quorum? Have people considered that, would that fit in in any way so that we could plug away in between meetings?
Great. Thank you for saying that because the thought crossed my mind earlier in the meeting and then it, I missed the opportunity. I think that's a good idea. You could have three people on a subcommittee.
Pertaining, what's this subcommittee pertaining to? Economic development?
Um, I guess the survey could be one of it. Prioritizing the, of all the ideas we talked about, the ones that we feel are the most important. Um, doing future, doing research into the land use regs for what we can, what we actually tangibly have a effect on. I don't know, three ideas.
That's three different committees.
Yeah, I think at the next meeting, we can decide what those are, especially if we've heard back from the select board by then, will we? Do they have a meeting next week?
They have a meeting this week.
And then two weeks later, so no, the night after. I think we wouldn't hear probably till after the meeting on the 19th.
But we still could have that conversation. I need to leave. We could still have that conversation, um, at the next meeting.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be on the subcommittee. I'm totally willing.
Okay, um, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting before everybody leaves.
I make the most.
Is there a second? Um, I'm just gonna take, I'm gonna take a thumbs up vote as, as to say that everybody agrees with adjournment. All right, all right, we are.
Kate, yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, goodnight.
Goodnight, guys.